All right, you're live.
Thank you. I'm gonna go ahead and call this special meeting to order 5:42. And I guess Mrs. Sewell, can you go ahead and do the roll call for us?
Sorry, I was muted. Mrs. Reed.
Yes, here.
Mr. Raymer.
Present.
Mr. Stubbs.
Here.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
All right, the purpose of this meeting is to meet with the people, the different entities from Germantown, Jackson Township, and Farmersville to discuss a proposed JED at the corner of Manning Road in Germantown-Farmersville Pike, Valley View School District. And I believe here this evening, looking through here, we have quite a bit of attendance, which is great to see. I believe we have Representative Brian Wafsek from Germantown. And I believe I see Nick Lamb from Farmersville. I am not sure if we have a representative from Jackson Township. Here, if you are on, please let me know.
I talked with Mike Moyer last night from Jackson Township, and they were not thrilled with the 24 hours notice and 5:30 meeting on a Saturday. So I do not believe a Jackson Township representative will be here.
All right, well, thank you. I appreciate knowing that. So at this time, I think we're gonna go forward. And really, I think the purpose is to discuss and see where we're at with numbers for the different entities. We don't wanna wait. I know this meeting's been trying to, I know my first email was sent out September 1st asking for available dates. So it's taken six weeks to get here. And so at this time, I don't know if Mr. Raymer has this document. It was brought before the board. I just took it out of my binder with the dates. Almost probably a year ago, I'm guessing. Mr. Wafsek might be able to hop in and tell me more. There's not a date on this, unfortunately, that tells me when this was put out. Do you know, Mr. Wafsek?
Which document?
It is the one that has really what the purpose of a JED is, the proposal.
Is that the first go ask questions document we'd all put together?
Yes, yes.
I think that was, let's see. That was earlier. It may have been back in the fall, but I wanna say it was early this spring.
Okay.
I do have it. I have it in my hand, so we're good. I'm familiar with it.
Okay, perfect. So I believe this evening, we just kinda need to go over any concerns that we may have, hopefully talk about those, work through those, and discuss them. So if anyone has concerns that they would like to bring up, hopefully get some questions answered. Please feel free to, I know there's been some concerns brought up at previous meetings, and so if we could get those kinda hammered out or answered, that would be great. Mr. Raymer or Mr. Stubbs, do you guys have any concerns?
I've shared my concerns multiple times with multiple people, most, a lot of people in this meeting. And I guess I feel like this is set up against me. So I'll go ahead and start with the reason. First of all, there's a, the purpose of a JED is a joint economic development district, to develop a district for economic purposes. That is not the case here. To use a JED as a tax redistribution center is not what it's meant for, according to the law. And when I met with Brian, Nick Lamb, and Ryan Hotson earlier this year, attorney agreed that this is a stretch for a JED. If you guys recall at the meeting, she, she said it was a bit of a stretch. So that's, that's issue number one I have. Issue number two, the percentage of the splits that was presented, the document that I'm sure you're referring to. The percentage of the splits is incredibly one-sided. So, and then I've also brought up the issue of a resource officer. I think if you wanna give this JED a purpose, a resource officer needs to be, the salary needs to be paid for at 75% by the JED. So I guess we'll just leave it there for right now, because those are my three main concerns that I've, I've stated multiple times, multiple places, and it's not been a secret.
So I guess I'll hop in and say, I hope you don't feel like this is a meeting against you. I think this is a fact-finding thing. I'm new to this as well and wanna make sure that this is prudent and the right steps forward. But my understanding from, you know, all the research I had done while working on the school and trying to get the levy passed and understanding what a JED is about and how it could replace the taxes lost by the municipalities, which would be the Village of Farmersville and Germantown City. You know, that this would be something in their camp that they would need to work out that didn't relate to the schools, and that's where it sits today. And so it is up to the four municipalities to decide if all four wanna participate or less and what things need to be ironed out. All I have, you know, as far as additional information is what's in these FAQs, which you as well have, Mr. Stubbs. But I think it does make sense to have the lawyers make sure that this JED would qualify for a JED and could be established. I think that is something to discuss with a lawyer. I don't know that there's anyone on the call that can fully shed light on that and be 100% clear today. I think Mr. Wafsek might have the most clarity on that. But I'm not sure there's any more clarity that it doesn't qualify for a JED than it does. Being a stretch doesn't mean it doesn't qualify. It just maybe means this is unique and maybe a little bit different. With that being said, I think what we can do is document what the concerns are today, outlined by whoever has them, and it doesn't have a name with them. I'm just saying, let's cumulatively outline what the concerns are. Let's address what we can today and put those issues behind us, because this has cycled for over a year. The school will be building and probably starting building within the next year, and we all stand to miss out on tax revenues. And if that's what we think is in the best interest of our constituents, then that's what we need to do. But I don't know that that would be the right thing. So I think we might wanna start with what's in the best interests of our constituents, and how do we meet those interests? And is there something, a mechanism in front of us like a JED that can help us meet those objectives? And I think that we can and we should investigate it further. So I understand you have questions. I as well have questions. But I definitely would not hope that you would feel like this is some kinda ambush for you, because I think everyone is right to have questions. This is a very important thing for our community across all four municipalities. But I think we should all have an open mind and look and do what's in the best interest of our people. Any objections to that before we go forward? Okay, so with that said, I think, you know, I've noted, I know as Mr. Stubbs had mentioned, I noted some of these things. The resource officer, I wasn't real clear on, but I do understand that concern. So, you know, what I would say is, you know, I've got a lot more procedural-type questions, similar to what he had said on how we would establish a JED, how it would operate, those types of things. I think more importantly, we should try to iron out the things between the four municipalities and make sure we're on the same page with those. And then if we are with the underlying circumstances and agreement across the four jurisdictions, then we should start working again with the lawyer. And I'm not sure where that stands and what had been drafted. I understand there might have been some kind of draft, and I haven't seen that. So I'd like to see where that stands. And if, if we need to make amendments to that or changes to that before it becomes finalized, we can work towards it. But, you know, again, Mr. Wafsek, I'll give you a moment here. Or Mr. Lamb, if you guys have any real clarity on this for sure 100% has no legal issues with establishing this JED. Otherwise, we can save that one for a lawyer and move on to make sure that we're all in alignment on the other key topics.
I'll jump in here. This is Brian Wafsek. I did ask our JED attorney to get on the call. I'm not sure if she is on yet or not. It looks like she may be. But, but just to clarify, this is a unique situation where there is only a school located on that parcel. However, it doesn't mean that the school is the only thing that will ever be there. They're gonna have water and sewer at that location that will meet the needs of the school. And it's, I think there is the potential in the future that other businesses or anyone else may wanna locate on that parcel. I know the school has discussed, they actually have more land than they need at that location. And, and they would be very interested in potentially allowing, you know, maybe a medical facility or something, you know, how the hospitals have teamed up with schools lately. So last time we had this discussion in person, I know we, we had discussed if another business or entity were to build on the JED parcels. I think all entities were in agreement that whatever was eventually built out there other than that school, though that, that tax revenue would go straight to Germantownship, given that this is, this is on your alls, in your jurisdiction. So I don't know. Brenda, are you on? If we wanna address this, this first issue, if you had anything else to add? She may not agree. So regarding the, what Mr. Raymer said as far as what's in the best interest of the community, obviously, as a representative from Germantown, I have an interest as does our entire council in seeing this go forward, given that we're gonna be losing up to around $90,000 potentially in annual income tax revenue as a result of the schools moving out to that parcel. I know Mr. Lamb and the city of Farmersville will be, or Village of Farmersville will be losing around $22,000 with the schools relocating in this land. So we both have a financial interest in seeing the JED set up. However, it, there is, there is a real benefit, I think, to all the entities, given that the school estimate for potential income tax just on construction could be up to $500,000. That would be up for, for splitting among the entities in the JED. So in addition to that, the high school is not currently taxed. And again, unless those staff members work, or I'm sorry, live in a taxing community. So this is a way to, I guess, level the playing field across the buildings. That high school will generate additional income tax revenue. That is, that is also additional revenue. I think if there's one thing we can all agree on, it's that cities and townships are struggling with revenue, struggling with road repairs, struggling with everything else. And so it, it makes a lot of sense. My understanding is there, there is no legal issues with setting this up out there. And, and obviously, we, we wanna see it done only because we don't want any other income tax increases on our residents as a result of the schools simply relocating. So as far as the percentage of the splits, I know we had come out with this frequently asked questions. We had a, a draft in there initially. Obviously, that's not set in stone. You guys have the latest draft agreement that we all have. And I think the remaining, the outstanding items are obviously the splits and the revenue-sharing formula. And then a couple other smaller issues, you know, the term. As far as the legal fees to set this up. But as far as the percentage of the splits, I mean, we can get creative here. That was a draft, I guess. I have not seen any other proposals come out. So that's obviously a topic for discussion that we all need to, that we all need to resolve. I know in our discussions with Germantown and Farmersville, you know, we're not trying to get greedy here. We're trying to preserve what we're losing, and that is really it. I don't, I don't know what, I assume that would come from the Germantownship Police Department. I don't know what your officers make. But, you know, that, that could very well end up sucking a large amount of everything that this JED would collect. So our rough estimates are the JED would, would end up generating around $140,000 a year, I believe. So, you know, between, between salary and benefits, and probably years of service that this officer would have, that very well could consume a lot of that. My opinion is absolutely the school needs a school resource officer. You know, my wife works there. I, I want that more than anything. However, I also believe that that is a, a expense that the schools really should be providing. If we all as a group decide that we wanna chip in and help the schools fund that, that's, that's good too. I have, I'm not gonna vote against that. But again, we need to have that discussion. And I think, you know, hopefully this meeting kicks it off. I'm sure we'll need some additional time, some additional meetings to, to get this proposal finalized and, and out before the public so they can review all the documentation, and then we can have a vote.
Mr. Wafsek, if you don't mind, I jump in. I know there was some discussing about the resource officer previously. And I believe someone asked Mr. Richard about a five-year forecast or what that looks like in the future, what the school would like, or their expectations, if you will, budget-wise. Do you recall what said?
He told us it is very high on his priority list. Now, I don't think they were looking at it currently, because obviously, the buildings are in different jurisdictions, and they would be, I don't know how they would do that. They figured it out. I know when I was in high school, we had one, so they figured it out before. I got the impression they are looking at that once the buildings are consolidated. But again, that's something, you know, school board members change, school priorities change. That's something I think it would be good for us to reach out and maybe clarify with them.
Okay. One other question on this year breakdown. The, I know someone mentioned construction of the building happening in possibly a year. Completion of the building, does anyone know if that's still slated for like 2025? Does that still seem appropriate?
Potentially. So I've heard the, even though the local match is now in place, the state is holding back the funding. I don't know, Mr. Raymer, if you know any more details on that. But I know they are not able to start anything yet, because the state share is now kind of on hold due to the downturn with the coronavirus.
And I know this, I might be jumping the gun a little bit. I know, looking at this previously, I think, I believe it was you and I had discussed. So right now, the high school revenue, the taxes from the high school employees on this split right now, as it sits, it, the roughly $44,000 is split amongst the four jurisdictions. Because the high school is solely in Germantownship, and you guys currently, you guys as in Germantown and Farmersville would not currently be losing any revenue until the school comes out. Or is that something that we are able to work out where Germantownship would get that full revenue until, you know, construction happens and the school moves out?
Yeah, as far as Germantown is concerned, absolutely. We'll have to figure out a creative way to document that in the, in the agreement. But yeah, I think that only makes sense. We're not looking for any of that high school revenue at the moment, because we'll still be collecting through the construction phase. We'll still be collecting our buildings that are located here in the city.
Yeah, looking at this document, it says 2021 and 2022 would stay at the $44,000 roughly, which is the high school tax income, it looks like. And it actually wouldn't change until the 2023. Now, obviously, that's flexible. Who knows? But that's what this document says, so I know that was a concern mentioned before.
I think one of the, one of the ideas we've done around was having basically formal building occupancy as kind of a kickoff to a change to the revenue share. Now, I know Valley View has also talked about potentially, if, for example, one wing of the building is finished early, they may go ahead and move people in. So we're gonna have to, that may not be the best metric to use. We're gonna have to figure that out. Again, flexible. Our interest is getting this in place. And I think it's in everyone's interest to get it in place sooner rather than later so that we don't miss out on that construction revenue.
Yes, like the construction revenue is, would be, I believe, very beneficial for our residents of Germantownship, looking at our, our budget. That's significant to us.
Faber, this is Nick Lamb with Farmersville.
Okay, yes.
I just wanted, I just wanted to tell you as well, we agree with Germantown. We can be extremely flexible with this. Just to, I hate to back up a little bit, but Brian mentioned the splits. And I should apologize in advance right now. If you hear my 15-month-old, we are on the way home from a Valley View football game and pickled. That's.
You're fine. I understand completely.
Anyways, I know that document was supposed to be a starting point. And the starting point was basically Germantown. What is the tax income revenue that you're receiving now? Farmersville, same question. That's what was put down on paper. That was what was determined to figure out what the splits should be. Again, a starting point, the construction tax. Obviously, we don't have a whole lot to do with that. So we can be extremely flexible with that money if that helps Germantownship's cause. Then, then yeah, I agree with Brian. This, this document right now is meant to be a living document until we do get it solidified. So I think that's something that, that we do as a group quickly, obviously. We may not see construction start happening, but we have started to see, you know, people out there. Soil samples might start as soon as we get money, things like that. So there will be income being generated shortly. The other thing is, of course, if we get the JED in place, then Germantownship could start collecting income tax from those employees of the high school immediately. So I agree with Brian. I think it's important for us to move forward on this rather quickly so that we can get something in place. But I don't wanna go so quickly that we miss anything or don't wanna have somebody feel misrepresented. So I guess a long answer to tell you, Farmersville is extremely flexible on that as well. Brian gave you our numbers on the income tax revenue. So I don't need to repeat that. But our goal in this process was to be made whole from that standpoint.
Couple things. Nothing, I mean, nothing should be guaranteed tax-wise. If, if any business leaves Germantown or Farmersville tomorrow, you guys have no way of making up that income. Another thing, people work in the township, live in the township for a reason, and one of those is no income tax. So switching gears a little bit to the city of Germantown, with the income tax credit reduction that Germantown passed a couple years ago, if a JED goes into place at the current percentage, 1.5%, wouldn't Germantown residents that work at the Valley View School District in the JED be paying a 2.4% income tax instead of 1.5%?
So, yes, we've never had a 100% credit. So we lowered the credit a couple years ago from 75% to 60%. So regardless, if, if you work in the city of Dayton and you also live in Germantown, yeah, you're, you're paying a portion to the city of Dayton and a portion to the city of Germantown. This is no different. It's, the JED is essentially its own tax entity, and it will collect income tax on the single parcel in the township. And if you work on that parcel, you will pay to the JED. And if you also live in Germantown, you will receive that 60% credit and, and pay any remainder.
I'll just add a couple points to that. You know, I think is Brian's highlighting here, that's very similar to a lot of circumstances with a lot of people across the entire state of Ohio. I mean, I work in Cincinnati. If I lived in Germantown, I would also be double taxed between Cincinnati and Germantown. I think that's consistent around the places. The only place this might change a little bit is obviously with the school teachers who may live in either V-ville or Germantown, because they would have now a tax to pay where they work in it and to where they lived instead of just where they lived. I think there's a couple options here, and I don't know how creative Farmersville and Germantown wanna get, that they could do a carve-out for credit for tax paid to the JED, considering they're collecting back some of that funds anyways, to maybe limit that. But that may be highly complex. The other thing I would say is we're talking about, you know, less than 5% of our entire community. And I think the broader concern should be the entire community.
So tax the few to benefit everyone else?
So if you don't do this, Mr. Wafsek or Mr. Lamb, would you like to go ahead and explain what would have to happen on your guys' side about increasing income taxes in your entire municipalities?
Right. I mean, it's, it's just another hit, right? We've, you guys have seen it as well with, with the local government fund elimination or reduction with the estate tax elimination. I mean, since 2013, we've lost a million dollars. So it's another hit. It's another $100,000 that's gonna be leaving. And where does it, where does it come from? I don't know. More road levies, another police levy, income tax credit, income tax increase. I don't know. Or, or cuts, obviously, cuts to services. I mean, there's, it's, it's not a, if, if we can prevent it, that's what we're trying to do.
I, I don't know how many people we're talking about, but it has to be less than 25 people and over the thousands of people, jurisdictions. It's not even comparable. And additionally, that's not something that's unique and doesn't happen to most people in the state of Ohio. So again, the, the, the school district wants the schools to be combined into one campus. The teachers have been asking for this for a long period of time, and there's always been a contemplation of a JED to go along with this. So this is not some bait and switch or some new discussion. This is something everyone should be fully prepared of, and we're, we're now debating something related to 10 people or less.
I think you have, anyone that works in Farmersville will see a tax increase. Anybody who currently works at the high school will see a tax increase. Anybody who lives in Germantown and works in the JED will see a tax increase. So we're talking, we're not talking about 10 people. We're talking about a majority of employees at this Valley View Local School District.
Well, Mr. Stubbs, if you don't mind, right now, my math from this paper says that Germantownship, who the three of us represent, is set to get an increase in revenue of $246,000 in the next five years. You are aware that our roads need the money. I mean, our road department, if we took some of that money and gave it to the road department, we might not have to run a road levy. If we took some of that money and gave it to the police department, we have been, we just talked at our last meeting about how it would, giving the CARES money to the police department would delay the need for a police levy. So you're saying that we're going to deny an additional $246,000 in five years? That's just in the next five years. That's a rough estimate. Obviously, numbers can change. How do we justify that to our constituents that we are going to turn down a quarter of a million dollars?
Perfect. Thanks for your question. I've actually, I'm going to propose right now, and I believe I've said it before, a five-year JED that only collects construction money with an equal 25% split for each jurisdiction. And at the end of that five years, you, the city of, the Village of Farmersville, the city of Germantown have five years to figure out how they can deal with the loss. I think that's reasonable. I think it's fair. You're taxing the construction, and you're not affecting the employees of this district who are probably underpaid to begin with.
So after the five years, if I look at this, what I have in front of me, which is rough, and I honestly think through talks with the people of the different municipalities, this is a low number for Germantownship. In the next five years after that, we're set to make $110,000. So we just would not get that $110,000, Mr. Stubbs? Or is there another way that you have that we can get that additional revenue?
Well, I'm sure you realize that if the school district does move out there, which they are, Germantownship will need an extra officer. So we're not gaining $110,000. We're probably going to have to add an extra officer. So we will actually take a loss in the, in the long run. So it's not a, you're not just sticking this in a pot for the road department later. This money's gonna be earmarked if it's here, and anyway. I mean, if there, if this JED goes through, we're paying for a police officer, especially if a resource officer is not going to be paid for by the JED.
So if the JED doesn't go through, we would still, in your opinion, we would still need a resource officer. Is that correct?
I think a resource officer is very important, absolutely.
So if we don't do the JED and get this $110,000? So if we don't do the JED and get this 110,000, where would we get that additional funding for that officer?
The funding for the officer will be covered by Germantownship. But backing up just a little bit. You're, this, you're, again, you go back, you're skipping over, they're glossing over the part where you're, you guys are taxing people. More than they are being taxed right now. It's one thing for Germantownship to put a levy on the ballot. And the residents have an option whether they're going to vote yes or no. You're discussing and enthusiastically discussing taxing. The school employees. With, when it has absolutely no benefit to the school employees. The purpose of a JED is to benefit the JED. There is no benefit. To the JED in this situation. That's why I've, I'm the one that proposed the resource officer being paid for. And that's because to give this JED a purpose, which it currently does not have. Paying for a resource officer is benefiting the school employees and benefiting the school district and benefiting the JED itself. So you can throw these big numbers at me and try to make me look like the bad guy and that's fine. But in reality, it comes down to, I, I don't believe that you should be so free. To tax the resident or the, the employees of this school district to balance budgets. When, when this money has never been guaranteed.
Jake, is it, is it fair that because the schools are building out there? That the school employees, if they don't live in a taxing municipality, will no longer pay any income tax to the local district?
Absolutely. That's why, that's why people live in townships.
So that, so that's your own salary now, right? I mean, is that what this all comes down to is you live in the township? You currently don't pay an income tax and you really don't want to pay one when the, when the schools move out there, given that you work at the schools?
Well, that's, that's a nice accusation that you're making, Brian, but I believe.
I'm asking the question.
You are asking a question and I believe I've been consistent over the years. And by the way. Just so we're clear. My participation in this has been approved by the prosecutor's office. But no, this is not about me. This is about the idea of taxation without representation and you are asking to tax the school employees. And there's no benefit or there's no guarantee I'll be working there in five years when this is, is in place anyway. So that is, actually, that's pretty insulting. I mean, not surprising since you said my greed at the last meeting, at your September meeting.
Let's hold, let's hold there because.
This, the greed of the city of Germantown that has messed this whole thing up from the beginning.
Mr. Stubbs, I, let's pause for a second because this doesn't need to go that direction. You say that there's no benefit to the school for, for the JED, correct? And, and the resource officer, I think, makes a lot of sense. I think we need to decide how we would fund a resource officer, but. My understanding is the village of Farmersville would be providing city water to the campus. Is that correct?
That's correct. That's one of the questions that I had about the proposal that Mr. Stubbs made. After the five years, when Farmersville is no longer involved in the JED, would we also be no longer involved supplying water to the facility?
Well, the school's going to pay for the water, correct?
What, what water? The water that comes from Farmersville?
Right.
They would pay for. I, I don't understand what you're asking.
Well, you're, what would Farmersville not continue to provide water? The school's going to pay for the water they use.
I'm just asking about the infrastructure for, to get the water there.
The infrastructure will be paid for. I'm assuming you'll pass that cost on to the school district as, as need be to get the, the water out there.
So you're suggesting that in your proposal, Farmersville make up their loss in increased water rates for the school district?
The loss of what?
There's infrastructure costs to supply the school. I guess there's like a lift station and some other things that need to be.
Right, but shouldn't that cost be passed on to the, to the school when the water's delivered over the, over time?
I, I guess that is a question there. I, I agree that it can be discussed, but I mean, my understanding is infrastructure costs are not generally just. Allocated to, to one building like that, you know, if you were to add something on, on a lift station, but. At the end of the day, you're absolutely right. If something's driving it, it could be charged incrementally, but you'd have to really think about. Can the school afford a capital investment like that upfront and all these types of things, which is fine. That's something to discuss.
Yeah, we currently have, we currently have three employees, one of which is part time. And, you know, the additional, additional man hours required at a lift station to take on that much extra use during the day. Could easily justify an additional, an additional employee on our end too. I know that. We've been talking a lot about this resource officer and, and what kind of hit that would have on Germantownship, but. There are a lot more things involved, a lot more extras involved. With the school, you know, being moved to a new location than just a resource officer. And I'm not saying that Farmersville is not willing to. Find a way, you know, to take care of this list station, to take care of the, the extra. Infrastructure costs that we will have because of this. But this is one of the reasons that a JED would benefit our community.
Yeah, I think it, it's also a way that the, that the JED can benefit the, the school and the employees that work there, right? I mean, the, the JED will help to offset some of those costs, those maintenance costs with sewer and water. It'll help to offset the police costs that Germantownship will incur regardless. So if the JED's not in place, you're going to have an extra officer that, that you're going to have to pay for. If the JED's not there, then you're going to be going to your own residence to, to collect that revenue. The city of Germantown and Germantownship, our fire department, our joint fire department. Will be likely covering additional calls out that direction, given that it'll be a single campus. We'll be adding the middle school in. So there's an additional cost there. Obviously, Germantownship. I know there are some road improvements that the school will be paying for, but potentially not everything. So. So the, the JED revenue will benefit the JED indirectly. It, it does not have to be a direct benefit. But at the end of the day, it's not like the money is going to the state of Ohio or the federal government anywhere else. It's staying right here in the four corners of our school district. To invest back into this community.
Mr. Stubbs, let me ask a question. You know, the, the percentage is one and a half percent and I, I understand there are some stipulations when you establish a JED about what the rate can be. But at my understanding is it could go lower if we all agreed. Would you feel differently if the rate was somewhat lower? I mean, knowing that Germantown residents or Germantown. Employees today, the, the teachers at the K through five or whatever, K through six are currently paying in Germantown taxes, payroll taxes, income tax on their income. For working there, the village of Farmersville teachers at the junior high are paying there. When they'll even go to the high school. What if they had a slightly lower rate that offset that, which is a much greater proportion of the teachers? Than just the high school teachers that would be picking up an income tax that they would have to pay.
Uh, that's, that's better, 1% or whatever, but I still don't agree on premise of taxing people without, without a benefit to them.
I, I, I just don't understand this piece of it though, because what you're saying is taxing people without benefit to them in return. The municipalities, including us, will incur costs or lose revenues across the board. That we will then be passing on to our thousands and thousands of constituents versus the school employees only. So what representation or additional, additional benefits are they going to be getting? From picking up the tab of the lost revenues from the teachers leaving the municipalities?
Not suggesting it by any means, but I'm sure this will be taken out of context like other comments I've made, but if we. Were to run a road levy, it benefits the entire township. We run a police levy, it benefits the entire township. It's just.
If, if we have increased services, correct?
Increased services to the school potentially.
Well, but how does that benefit, how does that benefit someone living in a township if we provide a school resource officer to the school?
You would have an officer, we would have an extra officer in the three months that the school is not in session.
And, and you think that, you think that we would pay them to work full time during that period?
Well, that's why I've, I've suggested the 75% SRO paid for by the JED. The other three months of the year would be paid for by Germantownship. With the revenue received, if we do agree to this JED, the money received. And yes, I think we would have basically one more full time officer.
I don't understand.
Specifically, sorry, go ahead.
No, I, I just, I, I personally, I mean, we can discuss the police budget just for Germantownship in the future, but I know we're going to be running up on a levy if it weren't for the CARES Act and that kind of thing in the near future, in the next three to five years and. And adding a resource officer and, and carrying that for three months when it's not necessary, when we have the ability to use part time officers for different things or whatever. I just don't think that's. Trued and wise, but at the end of the day, I think this all revolves down to a principle point that you're making and that's why I think it's worth discussing is. The principle is you don't feel like the school resource officer, the water to the school and the other services and all the teachers getting new facilities. That have been enabled potentially by this JED and agreement, all these different things that the, the school will actually benefit. You don't see those as benefits. That, that result in them being willing to pay any additional taxes. And it's only some people. Again, this is not across the board. It's the 40 high school teachers that aren't taxed today or however many high school teachers, maybe less than that, whatever it is. And then potentially if they don't do anything different with their tax code, some Germantown teachers and some Farmersville teachers. Could have double taxation, which I think they could still look to potentially give them a credit if they're paying in the JED. But they potentially could. So we're talking about a very, very small modicum of people that might have incremental taxes. Versus lost revenues across many jurisdictions, Germantown, Farmersville and Germantownship. That we would have to then make up or ask our constituents to pay for with no additional benefit to them. Really truly no additional benefit to them. And we would be asking them to pay for it and tell them it's because we lost revenue or we've incurred additional costs, costs with the school moving to the, the. In one campus. I think that's a really hard sell to thousands of people versus the few teachers. And I'm not, I'm not minimizing the incremental taxes. This is not inordinate though. That's what bothers me, I think, the most is, is we're making this seem as though this is some extraordinary circumstance. When I can lay out endless circumstances where people pay taxes where they work and where they live.
And Miami'sburg taxes are significantly higher than Germantown's taxes. And then I also pay, I get a 60% credit, I believe Mr. Walsig said, for Germantown's taxes.
So why, why don't we just think on this for a few moments? I guess, Mr. Walsig, Mrs. Reed or, you know, Mr. Lamb, if you guys, can you tell us what would happen? If one, two or three wanted to, of the taxing districts wanted to formulate a JED and anyone else did not participate. My understanding is that Germantownship is integral because the school sits, the, the JED sits in the district. What about the other municipalities?
So you will, yes, you're correct. Germantownship's integral in this because the school is sitting in your jurisdiction. You need at least one municipal partner. In order to levy an income tax. So you would need at least one of us. I think between Mr. Lamb and I, we've, we've sort of. Reached an agreement there that we're not going to stab each other in the back here. We want to, we want to work this together. We want to do this as a community. Jackson Township, it's sort of irrelevant at this point. We, we included them and, and we have continued to include them, invite them to meetings and, and we include them obviously on the frequently asked question sheet. Just in order to, I guess, have all four entities represented here within the JED. All four of us make up the Valley View community. So, so we didn't want to exclude anyone. But at the end of the day, given that the building is no longer going to be located in Jackson Township. It, it's, I guess, irrelevant whether they wanted to join or not. If they chose not to, it would, it would increase the revenue share for everyone else. And, and they would miss out on, on whatever funding was available to them. Obviously, there is a concern. Given that townships are required to pass JEDs unanimously. Whereas the, the municipalities are not. So far as well, Germantown could pass this just on a majority vote. The townships are required to be unanimous. So if, for some reason, Jackson was not going to be unanimous. I would probably recommend that we drop them before we start the public hearings and everything else that's required of this, only because it, it, it's not. It's not in our best interest to take this to a vote in Jackson Township when they really are not contributing to the JED. Now, Germantownship, if, if this was not a unanimous vote for Germantownship. Again, it would be referred to the voters. And that would include the incorporated areas and the unincorporated areas. So whatever proposal we had put forward, the voters of both the city and Germantownship. Would, would actually both vote on this and. They would either vote whatever the proposal we had in front of them in favor or against and, and go from there.
Appreciate that background. That's exactly where I was wanting to go. And so what proposal would go in front of the township and Germantown residents to vote on?
That's a good question. It would be whatever, I guess, we, we mutually had, had put together. So I, I don't know. I, if the attorney was here, maybe they could clarify. I think. At the end of the day, if, if Germantown and Farmersville had come to some agreement and. We could at least come to some agreement that was acceptable. To Germantownship or Jackson Township, then, then we would, we would press with whatever we thought was, had, had the best chance of passing and. And if it didn't, then we, we go to the vote of the residents.
At the same time, we could do this with Germantownship, Jackson Township and Farmersville. Is that correct?
Yes, you, you need a, you need a single municipal partner.
Mr. Walsig, I'm not sure if you're going to know the answer. It's kind of a detailed part of it. Would, when, let's say it has to go before a vote of the people. Would the percentages, the breakdown of the percentages be part of it or are you unsure of that?
It would have to be the final, whatever we had decided as the final agreement. So, so yeah, the, the splits, I think everything would need to be in there.
Going back to the $90,000 to $100,000, you've been anywhere in between for the loss of revenue for Germantown. Several years ago in a joint meeting between Germantownship and the city. I can't remember which council person it was, but they said that Germantown was set to lose $28,000 if the school. Was to move outside the city limits. I mean, was that a misstatement three or four years ago or did we increase, you know, $60,000 in just a couple of years?
I do, that's a good question. I haven't heard the 28,000 figure. The, the numbers that I've been quoting today were numbers that were given to me by the school district.
Mr. Walsig, could that, I don't, I can't recall. I, I, I'm a CPA, so it's not like I have some inside information. I'm just talking about what I've seen on tax returns, but. Didn't your credit get reduced a few years ago and that could be part of the reason why it changed?
I, I don't think it would be that big of a, of a change though, as a result of that. I don't know. I don't know where 28,000. So we did, we ended up losing, if you all recall back probably. Oh, it was probably Sherry Park's last year here, whenever they did the kind of reconfiguration of all the schools. Germantown did lose, because we lost the middle school. We did lose not an insignificant amount of funding at that time. So that, that actually could have been close to 28,000. But I don't think it's ever been 28 as far as moving out to a single site.
Brian, if it helps, I have a.
Brian, if it helps, I have a Germantown tax receipts from the school, it was around ninety-two thousand five hundred and twenty-eighteen and eighty-four thousand one seventy-five in twenty-nineteen. Yeah, so if if anything, I don't I don't know where the twenty-eight thousand dollar number came from either, obviously, I don't go to your meeting, so I don't know who said that, but two years ago was the question asked, and it was ninety-two thousand five seventeen.
Does that include the residents that are paying the one point five percent anyway? That are going to pay it regardless of whether the school moves or not?
That's based on the school total payroll, so that's just employees of the school.
Right.
And and district office employees.
If the school moves, you still have a significant amount of employees that live in the city of Germantown that are still going to be paying that income tax, so it's not just a straight ninety thousand dollar loss, you still have you still have those teachers living in the district paying the one point five percent.
Yeah, no, you're right. We actually thought about lumping that in, I think the best the school district gave us was oh, I don't know, I don't I don't remember the exact figure, I want to say it was around thirty percent, it actually was not as high as I imagined, thirty percent of the staff that had lived in either Germantown or Farmersville. But again, you know, that that people move, that changes, it was a number that was hard to pin down, and then you start getting into, if if you do try to figure that out, you start getting into people's personal tax documents and whatever, and we didn't want to go there, so. Well, we probably never could have gone there, but I think the number the school gave us was around thirty percent.
So in theory, that ninety thousand dollars could be thirty percent higher than what the city of Germantown is actually going to lose.
Yeah, given given whatever the status of where people lived two years ago, yes. Again, we are not stuck on a dollar figure here, I I think we're here to to figure out a way forward, if there is no way forward, at least with a unanimous vote of the township, because we're going to be taxing the school employees, then I don't I don't know where we go from here, if there is a way forward, then then we need to probably sit down and try to try to come to some agreement with some figures and let's press with this. But if if we are fundamentally in disagreement or or do not agree with the premise of taxing the teachers, or said another way, of allowing the teachers to work at the new facility without getting, without paying any tax, then then I don't know where we go from here.
I I think that it makes some sense just to talk some high level, and I know some of these are a little squishy, and it's not where I want to be talking, but let's do some hypothetical. What we've said is somewhere, let's call it around a hundred to a hundred and fifteen-ish thousand dollars between Germantown and Village of Farmersville would be lost, some of that may still be held and not completely lost if you have residents that work at the school district, so. But let's let's keep that in mind, about a hundred thousand-ish dollars there, there's another forty thousand of potential revenue from the from the high school teachers that are not taxed today. So that's a hundred and forty thousand-ish dollars, a hundred and forty-five thousand-ish dollars, I think is what you guys had mentioned, that we could get from the JED at one and a half percent. What things we say we're going to incur is a school resource officer, and definitely some fire EMS potential, which is hard to judge, but then the Village of Farmersville will be providing city water to the 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 topic, the school will pay for the water, and as as Mr. Stubbs mentioned, that that seems fair, I don't know. The initial capital expenditures to get them set up and all that kind of stuff, I don't know how that will run, if they will be built directly, or how that maybe it might be in construction costs, I think that can be sorted out. With that being said, you still have a school resource officers, and you have the lost revenues from the municipalities in the Village, Farmersville. I think, Mr. Stubbs, you're saying it's fair to believe you're not going to lose all the revenues that may have been quoted, and we need to figure out the resource officer piece of this, I don't know that there's enough funds to pay for the majority of a resource officer and accomplish the goals of you guys are covering, I think it makes sense. As I've said from the beginning, and I still feel vehemently this way, that it would be foolish of us not to imply and form some kind of taxation on that on that site. Those, most of those people have been paying taxes already and would continue to pay taxes. I do think to Mr. Stubbs' point, we shouldn't make it overly strenuous to try to make it some kind of economic boon for us or gain money that we never had, and I don't think that's anybody's intent. I think even at the one and a half percent, we would have a hard time recovering just what the municipalities are losing and the resource officers, but I would be okay with if we want to agree that somewhere south more than the one percent, or do something along lines of one and a half percent to capture why the construction is making. You guys can recover more of your funds that you'll lose immediately and try to bank some of that money, and then we move to a one percent long term for the school's benefit. But then I need, I think we need to think through, does, do they pay what portion of the resource officer for what period of time? Mr. Stubbs, I know you feel strongly, I mean, do you do you feel like there's a path forward that we can compromise and come up with a way that makes sense for our constituents, but yet keeps you know, maybe not everyone whole, but at least benefits our communities, so we our broader communities do not detriment from this?
I think if if we get to that point, the percentages need to be definitely more fair. Fifty-seven percent, I know it's a working document, but to come out with the original document, fifty-seven percent going to the city of Germantown, is not is not fair, I don't believe. One thing I would propose, well, and I already said it tonight, if we could do a five-year construction-only JED, twenty-five percent split each way, I think that's incredibly fair. But then that also would buy us five years to come up with a plan long term, if that's necessary for what we want to do. I still, I I mean, still, I I mean, I know I'm the I'm the anti-tax conservative, despite what the mailers you all received back in the spring. But, you know, we we've, we have to look at this reasonably and objectively, and if we gave ourselves a five-year window to sit down and find out exactly what revenue Germantown's losing, Farmersville's losing, and then basically wean the government off of something that they're not entitled to anyway. Because, I mean, you go back to taxation, taxation is theft, really, so. But a five-year plan now, and then plan for the future in that timeframe would be my deal solution to this.
I understand, and let's just put ourselves in our own, only our township perspective and think through it from that perspective, I I think that is a logical offer. The only thing I would say is after five years, we still have the resource issue, and maybe it's we only help pay or subsidize the resource officer for the first five years, but then you're you're putting, you're shifting that cost to someone that will not have revenues to cover it at that point in time. Maybe we're saying that it's only fair to allow people a certain time to prepare, but I think at the end of the day, my biggest concern here is we're we're focused on a very small area of our representation versus the broader representation. And I I agree, I don't want to increase taxes for the purpose of increasing in additional spend, because I too am a fiscal conservative. However, when costs already exist, unless we want to convey to our constituents that we're going to cut services to maintain their current tax rate, I think the additional school resource officer would cause us to cut services or increase taxes on our broader Germantownship, which I don't think is something that's fair to them if we have a different way forward that the school district is already aligned with.
I think other people tonight have mentioned the school district paying for the resource officer, not us. And in totality, so, I mean, that was my proposal to give this JED a purpose that I still don't believe this JED has. But if if the school's going to pay the resource officer, then our cost would be less, and we wouldn't be taking that as big of a loss, even if we had to have a road officer out there in the mornings and afternoons.
Yeah, and that's something we're going to need to clarify with Mr. Richards, I think. As far as what their plan is, I know he said it was high on the priority list, but, you know, but things change, who knows?
So if it is possible, I would like to see the numbers. You know, with the the residents that live in Germantown and Farmersville, so we know exactly what type of money we're we're talking about, I'm assuming Pat at the city would be able to come up with this as well, wouldn't she?
Yeah, maybe, the problem is in income tax records like that are very much protected. So I don't, I don't know if you could ever drill down to a, I mean, at that point, you're talking about individual taxpayers and like in their addresses, right? I don't think we could ever get that information, I mean, she is bound by certain privacy laws that I I don't know if we could ever do that. We can certainly ask the question, but I have a feeling the answer may be no. Maybe we could get a, you know, something closer to what the school gave us. As far as, you know, roughly thirty percent of the school employees live in either Germantown or Farmersville, maybe we could get that broken out by community. And again, that's a snapshot in time, but I don't know, I guess it's somewhat a start. I tend to be one that would argue, five years from now, after we've collected whatever we collect from the construction costs, we're going to be looking at something very similar to what we're looking at today. I mean, I don't know, I don't know if the game is going to change between now and then. And if we can come to some agreement between the four of us or three of us, then then let's knock it out today, not today, but you know, in the near future.
Mr. Stubbs, I know you had mentioned, and I might be way ahead, about the fifty-seven percent that Germantown was getting or in the draft, I'll say that's been a while back. I know they have said, and Farmersville has said, that they are flexible in that number, and I don't know, Mr. Stubbs, if you have this document in front of you. But me looking at it not from a Germantown or a Farmersville perspective, it looks like there's some wiggle room in those numbers that could, I will say, give some more revenue to Germantownship. I don't know if that's something you even, that would be in the five-year, I'm sorry, after the five-year, that'd be your six. That's something you even want to talk about, or you, like they've said fundamentally, are just kind of at a standstill?
I think that would be better for for everyone, especially Germantownship, but I think without the lawyer on the meeting tonight, I mean, I want to see the purpose justified, you know, in writing. By, and we're going to have to send that to our representatives as well, but if the percentages were more fair and another draft was presented with the numbers, I I'm open to looking at them, but but I I mean, we we've come this far, and the the numbers haven't really changed, so.
I think everyone's open to having them changed tonight, Mr. Stubbs, I mean, I I think we got to be a little bit more firm on a few topics, and that's our, is Germantownship willing to pay for anything the resource officer? And is that just contingent on our split? Because I I think I need to hear from you what your perspective is there, are you, you're over the police, you know, you have the best understanding of the police, I know I've done some work on the budget and want to want to talk with Mr. Anzick and you on that, but long term, I don't think, you know, with the cost increases that have been pushed to us, that we can't go back to our constituents or hold off more than five years with the way the increases are going, the CARES Act's definitely going to buy us some time, but with that being said, for us to take on a resource officer without the JED, that means we're going back to our constituents. And we have to be clear and understand that here tonight, it doesn't take much foresight to see that coming. And so even if we don't have a resource officer that we fully fund, there will be incremental costs just from supporting that region, and we need to be clear with our constituents that we chose not to do a JED because we didn't think it was the right thing for the teachers to tax them, and that's essentially, you boil it down nice and smooth, that's about as simple as it can get, and that's where I think it's a pretty thin line, so if it's simply the split, I think everyone said they're open to negotiation on the split. I think I would love to hear you offer up what you think is fair, because you've mentioned fairness several times. And I think there's a lot of ways to call it fair based on lost revenue versus income to come, or expenses to come, et cetera, et cetera, but what would you say is a proposal that you could get behind that you think is fair, the five-year piece? And we can negotiate that if that's the only thing you feel is fair, but then again, in five years, we're going back to our constituents and saying there was lost revenue across the board from the teachers moving out and us incurring more expenses at the high school campus, and so we're coming to you guys now because we didn't want to tax the school teachers. That's the, that's the line.
So more of a taxation against anybody, not just the, it's school employees totally. I know you and Brian are trying to paint this me specifically as this affecting myself, which is ridiculous. But
For a second, hold on, because somehow we're getting this way out of balance. I I don't know if you have history with Mr. Walsig and that discussion, I have not said a single word about you being a school employee. The point is, this is a balance of discussion, and we're not going to paint it any other way, position you inside or outside of it. It's whether we want to tax the people at the campus, the school employees at the campus, to pay for the lost revenues and additional expenses that will be incurred because of moving the campus there, or do we want to have to potentially go back to our entire townships, villages, and municipalities to tax them to make up for those losses? That's the balance, you have a simple scale here, and you have a hundred and some employees versus thousands of constituents. And so there's no other way to paint that picture, and it has nothing to do with you whatsoever.
So if the JED goes through, and I think I've said this already, if the JED goes through, the resource officer should be paid for with that, partially with that money. And if we need to discuss the percentage that that's paid for, I mean, I'd be willing to move a little bit, but you know, if it's, if we have to get an officer out there, the twenty-two thousand dollars a year that we get is not going to cover the needs that we we need. So that's where I say the percentage split is not fair.
Absolutely agree, hundred percent agree.
So I mean, that's where I'm at on that, we can't take a loss on a JED that's in our, that is only happening because it's in our our township. We cannot take a loss on that just flat out. So the percentages, that's where I say percentages are an issue, we're not going, I I'm not voting to take a loss, you can say we're going to lose twenty-two thousand dollars a year for fifty years, but that's not because it's not fair to begin with, it doesn't make it okay.
But let me, let me ask this, what if we said, you know, if it's truly a hundred and forty thousand a year on a going basis, not with the construction, so we get this construction potentially boon that can help offset some of the losses that the Village of Farmersville and Germantown will lose, and then going forward, if we have a hundred and forty thousand dollars a year, that can pay for, let's call it the seventy-five percent of the resource officer, which may be, you know, seventy, eighty thousand dollars a year, and it'll leave sixty thousand to be split among the Village of Farmersville and Germantown to offset some of their lost revenue, which we both probably know is not truly the full ninety, because they had some residents, we'll never get to the right number there. But I think what we could agree is that we would not be made whole completely for the resource officer, they would not be made whole for the lost revenues that they had. Essentially, they could right-size their their resources at some point into the future, hopefully, and and we would still be funding that resource officer, the only question is there, would our constituents want us to fund the resource officer or put that onto the school wholly, and I, that's a question that I think is, still needs to be, have a little bit of discussion really quick.
Well, and for me, it's hard to know what percentage the school is willing or able, obviously, school funding is an issue, to to fund of that resource officer, so if we say here tonight, we're going to fund fifty percent, and the school says, well, we don't even have the funds to fund the other fifty percent, where, what do we do then, and maybe the school says, you know what, we've done the budget, and we can actually pay for a school resource officer out of our own pocket. And now we've already decided, well, we're going to pay fifty percent, I don't know without the school and their budget, and they have a five-year forecast that changes, it fluctuates frequently. It just changed, I think, when the governor took some money away not too long ago, so.
And I, I think that goes back to another point I didn't make earlier, but to this, to my knowledge, at this point in time, Valleyview Schools has not applied for this JED. So if Valleyview had applied for for this JED, because I know I saw the email earlier that Mr. Richards says So if Valley View had applied for, for this JED, because I know I saw the email earlier that Mr. Richard says he's in agreement, but is the school board in agreement? I, I don't know. That's for them to vote on at some point in time. So I mean, they could still put a stop to this too. Technically, the school board could say, with their not being an applicant currently. I, I think we've kind of got our cart before our horse anyway, with there being no actual applicant for this, for this JED as well.
I think that's a less than 1% formality after working with the school board for the last two years or whatever it may be. But regardless, I, I don't want to throw white herrings out there to distract from the discussion. I think there is a great point there that they, we don't, we can't predict exactly what they'll pay a resource officer. I think my question though is, is that something we have to, because my understanding, Mr. Wossig, is each, each participant municipality has to contribute something. Could the resource officer be something that we're, we're at least contributing a portion of? Would that qualify? Or what else could maybe that already exists? Not my understanding is, it says in this frequently asked question, like snow removal would not qualify because we already provide that. So I guess the resource officer might be something that we have to provide at least to some degree.
I think when it comes to, so you would be required to provide police services to the JED. You, you are currently required to do that, and you would be required to do it in the future. A school resource officer may actually fit. It's sort of above and beyond what you're legally required to provide. So, so yeah, I think, not being a JED attorney, but I think that would fit that definition.
The JED attorney did attend a Germantownship meeting a while back, where we did discuss possibilities that Germantownship could contribute. Things, obviously, police services, we are required to, to provide. However, we are not required to provide someone to direct traffic after school, before school or what have you. Obviously, that is in the best interest of the citizens. I know Germantown does that quite a bit up here in Germantown, and that's very beneficial. But it's not necessarily something that is required. It's them going above and beyond. So my understanding when we met with the JED attorney was that things like that would be us contributing to the JED because it would be going above and beyond.
Anyone else have any other questions? I have several things that hopefully we can start driving forward if there's no other additional questions to bring up. Okay, I think to Mr. Stubbs' point, he has a lot of valid concerns, and I hope he doesn't feel like anyone's trying to paint him in any certain light. I think, you know, we should all strive to lower the taxes for our municipalities, and I think that's where we differ, is how, how that objective will be achieved. But at the end of the day, I think there's a couple of things that we have to do. I think we need to pull the superintendent in, and as well as the board representative if necessary. The president of the board would be likely to join from the school district. And also the, the lawyers for the JED to clarify just a few questions that we have. And, and we can work to, you know, clarify exactly what those are through emails ahead of the next meeting. I think we need to set up a drumbeat of monthly meetings where we keep these a lot more brief than tonight, but keep this ball moving in the discussion going forward. To make sure that, you know, we're not going to miss out on construction revenues because of a few things. Now, I think there's a substantial discussion yet to be had on the split. I think one of the things I would like to see, Mr. Stubbs made a point about how much actual revenue would still be retained within Germantown. And the village of Farmersville, I think we should ask the school district if they can provide a generic. How much of the teachers that worked at Farmersville or Germantown or currently work at Farmersville and Germantown actually reside within those taxing jurisdictions? If they want to give us a generic, it doesn't have to do anything with PII, Personally Identifying Information in that Act. I think they could provide us an overall, you know, generic percentage that would help us understand the exact lost revenues. I think at the end of the day, we have to decide what's going to happen with the school resource officer, which will be between Germantownship and the school, and how that split will occur. And then once we understand more on your guys' lost revenues and more on how much the S R C, the school resource officer that we would have to pay. I think then we'll know more of what the expenses will be that we're all trying to navigate through. Now with that, then we can do better on how much will the percentage actually be? How much money is there potentially to go around? How long should we, or how should we split this? And for how long should it continue?
I, I'll just say, again, I am 100% in full support of a five-year JED, construction only with an equal 25% split. So that's where I'm at right now, and the rest of it is to be determined based on the numbers. But I am 100% for a five-year JED based on the timetable for construction with an equal 25% split for each jurisdiction.
So Mrs. Reed, let me interject if I may. I know I don't have a vote in this for Germantownship, but listening to everything that's been said tonight, especially to what Mr. Stubbs has said. I am concerned if this drags on the discussions, the negotiations. That it really pushes this final decision out fairly far into the future. And if Mr. Stubbs, I'm not going to speak for him because I don't know, but if he would ultimately vote no, and it has to go to a vote of the people. That adds a significant amount of additional time. So I wonder if you might ask. Three or four jurisdictions decide to split this up into two different entities, two different JEDs. Get the one going so we can get the construction tax revenue now as soon as it starts. And then spend the next year or whatever it takes negotiating and potentially having voters have to vote on a JED going forward. But I don't want us to lose the construction revenue because of ongoing disagreements over how or what or even if to do a JED. And if we could split it up, I think that allows something to move forward. And with that, I'll mute myself again.
I actually agree 100%. I think it's wise. We, I think we're all in agreement that the 25% split would be fine through the construction phase. That buys us additional time. It moves the ball forward. But I guess I'll allow Mr. Wossig, Mrs. Reed, Mr. Lamb to, to comment.
My only concern with, with doing that, two separate JEDs. Is that, you know, a lot of the negotiable. Amount of income here is the construction tax revenue. Of course, you know, we gladly accept 25% of that. But I think. You know, everybody loses a little bit of bargaining room if we lock into an agreement like that right now.
I also want to say in meeting with the attorney, and I don't recall which meeting it was, and I'm speaking about the JED attorney. She mentioned that recently, and I don't know how recent, a couple of years, whatever, we used to have to include the county. Into the JED and the county had to get some sort of a split, I believe, Mr. Wossig, feel free to correct me if I'm wrong. My fear of doing a five-year and then in the next five years doing another one is if we started JED. Now, we are not locked into having that county paying, giving a percentage to the county. If we only do a five-year one and we have to go back in five years, we could potentially have to give the county. I don't know whatever percentage they have established, which concerns me a little bit.
Yeah, that's, that's right. I mean, they, they changed all the, they, they completely rewrote the JED rulebook three years ago. So, so it's always going to be a risk if we do a short term that. Who knows, the state could take JEDs away completely. I mean, we, we just don't know. Now, it's very unlikely. But yeah, I, it probably is likely that the rules could change. And, and I agree with what Mayor Lamb said in terms of. Obviously, we are very flexible in the construction costs. But when it comes down to whatever our longer-term split is, obviously, we are still flexible there as well. However, we have a duty to our constituents as well, and, and so we're going to want to try to protect that as much as possible now. Whatever the group decides to, to do, I think we'll support, but there is added risk with doing a shorter term. We, we could all change, right? We've been talking JEDs here. I think, when did the first one fail? 2007 or something? We've been talking JEDs for 13, 14, 15 years. We are this close. Do we want to just kick the can and? And say we didn't have enough information, right? There are a thousand variables if you dig into it. You can look at where teachers live, you can look at where the bus barn is, where the, the school front office is. You know, who's providing what? There are literally a thousand variables that can go into this. At the end of the day, we need to be flexible enough. And understanding enough of each jurisdiction and their needs and come to an agreement and put this thing to bed finally.
Mr. Stubbs, looking forward at year six to 10, if we were to get, right now, the breakdown is 22,000. If we were to get somewhere in the 30, 30-some thousand, would that change your mind at all?
I'd need to see it on paper. At some point, I, I'm not the best with numbers in my head. So I mean, I'd have to see it and think it over, but that's something I would consider.
Okay, because I mean, like Germantown and Farmersville have said, they are very. I believe in our past discussions, with my past discussion, I should have said with both Germantown and Farmersville. I think 30,000 is something that they are comfortable with. That's not something set in stone or something that's been written on paper. But if there is a number that would help make this deal go through, I think that's something that both Germantown and Farmersville, and I believe Jackson Township are willing to do.
Right, I mean, I'll, I'll speak up there for that. I, I think. Whatever we can do, we've got to start the discussion. Tonight was very good. I want to thank Germantownship trustees for, for sending this up and attending and having a good discussion. But at the end of the day, we. We need to continue the discussion as Mr. Emmerich said, and, and I think whatever I can do to help you guys. In terms of numbers or, or anything that you need to maybe come up with what Germantownship would like to see. I would like to see that. Because I don't think I've seen any real numbers from, from either township. Now, Jackson, you know, Jackson's happy to get five bucks out of this because they, they really aren't contributing anything. But maybe the next step is Germantownship, take a hard look at the numbers. See what would work for you, and let's go from there. In my head, I've got sort of where we can go, and again, I'm one person. This is going to have to go to the full council. Just like Farmersville is going to have to go to their full council. But yeah, I, I think that's the, the best way forward.
And Brian, I, Jackson Township was invited, of course. We, we know where they're not here. I don't want to speak on their behalf, but. They have, you know, I've spoke with their representative, and they're definitely flexible on those numbers as well. But I don't want anybody to think that Jackson Township is not providing anything. Right now, Jackson Township provides, you know, an officer that checks in multiple times per day at the school in Farmersville, and they would continue to do that at the school in Germantown. So Jackson Township would not just be receiving money and doing nothing in return. So I just wanted to make that clear. Also wanted to point out one other thing that a lot of people might not be familiar with. The school is the largest employer in Farmersville, so not a lot of industry in the village of Farmersville. That might surprise a lot of you. But it is worth pointing out, I think, at least in my opinion, that the school in Farmersville is our largest employer.
And to add to Nick's point, Chief Shade and Sergeant Brunner do a fantastic job. I see them multiple times a week, and that's definitely to the benefit of, of the, the school district for sure. So I would hope they would continue to make it to the buildings, even if they move, or even when they move, sorry.
And we've had that conversation, Mr. Stubbs, and that they are on board with, with doing the same, so. And that's, that's the deal behind this whole thing, is that Farmersville, Jackson Township, Germantownship and Germantown. We all look at this thing as, as a community. And yes, of course, we could cut out Jackson Township. Germantownship, Germantown, you could get together and cut out Farmersville. But Valley View Schools represents these four municipalities, and I think it would be great if the four municipalities could all be involved in this JED somehow. I would also like to just ask, is, you know, I know, Mr. Stubbs, you've proposed a new plan. Is there any way that you would be willing to look at the first draft of this original plan? Kind of put your red marks on that and, and get back to us in time for a, a next meeting?
Yes, send me, if someone would send me the document or whatever is the most up to date, I would be happy to go over it. Prior to the next meeting and send it back in plenty of time.
That would be great. We can get to you. We should, before we get off this call, I believe that we should schedule the next meeting as well.
I completely agree. I know we all have regular meetings at different times. Some of our times overlap. Is there a time that anyone would like to suggest to meet?
Brian requested on a Saturday night.
You don't like these, Brian? Okay.
I would propose that because there are three of you at Germantownship. A time that would work for the three of you, if for some reason it doesn't work for me or Brian individually. We could send another representative from our council, so Brian, what do you think?
Yeah, yeah, that's fine with me. I think let Germantownship set it up, and we will attempt to attend, and if we can't, we'll send a representative for us.
So how, how about Tyler, Abra, bring dates to our meeting on Tuesday? And we can set it at our Tuesday meeting and send out the notice, or to the, send out the dates to the other entities. I, I don't have my calendar in front of me.
Yeah, no, that, that makes sense to me. I mean, we're meeting in three days. We can get that and then get back with the other folks pretty quick. The, the three things I have, and everyone chime in if you have additional things that hopefully we can kind of nip in the bud before the next meeting. Is to confirm with the JED lawyer that truthfully we can move forward, that all this work will not be in vain, that there's no overwhelming concerns, and that we will establish one. Number two, confirm with the school board, not just the superintendent, that they are aligned to this, and I can do that through email or whatever. And then the, the third one is, Mr. Stubbs, you know, you look over the, the current agreement, and I think, you know, it'd be nice if, if you, I, and Mrs. Reed all could have a quick chat on what we felt was, was reasonable. And I'm fine to go with what you offer. I think you make valid points, and I'm fully on board with a lot of the discussion you have. So if you just want to propose, you know, what you think is fair going forward, and then we can have that chat at the next meeting. But I think those are the three things. The JED lawyer confirmation, school board confirmation, and then Mr. Stubbs, you kind of put a spin on your split proposal.
Right. Again, I'm still one person on board with the five-year plan, but I will definitely look at the, the long term and see what I can come up with for that. That I think is hopefully fair for everyone.
Okay, all right. I, I think that's all I have.
I don't have anything else. I appreciate everyone attending, and we've had, well, we have several constituents on, which is great to see.
If you're done with the meeting, I need a motion to adjourn the Germantownship trustee meeting.
I will make a motion to adjourn. I just saw Mr. Stubbs unmute. I wanted to make sure he didn't have anything to add.
No, just the, the 24-hour notice for a meeting of this importance. I know that's why Jackson Township didn't come, so let's definitely plan a month out or so for the next one.
Mr. Stubbs, I emailed on September 1st, September 30th, and October 1st, asking you for available dates, and you did not return any of my emails.
But to get 24 hours notice to the people of the community is pretty disappointing for a meeting of this magnitude.
I did get.
On a Saturday night as well. On a Saturday night as well.
I gave you six weeks to return an email, so you could have gotten, actually, September first, we could have scheduled it and had more flexibility, but.
Okay, I, I appreciate everyone coming from everybody, attending. I'll second the motion to adjourn.
All in favor of the motion? We are officially adjourned at seven twelve.